Okay, call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting, it's Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, going to move right into consent agenda, Melanie?
Approval of payroll, January 22nd, 2021, approval of claims, January 14th, and 21st, 2021, approval of minutes, January 12th, 2021, weights and measures, monthly report for December 16th to January 15th, 2021 filed, treasures, monthly report for December 31st, 2020, filed.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for consent on agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, we're going to get into our citizen appointments, these are appointments that we make every year, we have had all of the respondents have given us all their applications in and we're ready to sort of move on filling these board vacancies, so with that, I will open up the floor and we'll start going down through these and getting people appointed.
Well, I will start with the alcoholic beverage board and nominate Jason Gilianna.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Jason Gilianna for the alcohol beverage board, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Jason has reapplied, he's been on the board for the last three years and we had no other applications for that spot.
I'd like to also real briefly just thank all these people who are willing to serve on the boards, they usually take a lot more time than expected and to do a good job and they don't get anything in return, except glory. Okay, for the Board of Health, we've got two appointments today, one Democrat and one Republican, I'd like to reappoint Dr. Patrick Fleming and Kathy Lemon.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Board of Health, two appointments, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And then, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
For the Convention Recreation and Visitors Commission, we have three appointments up, we've got Kathy Brown-Brown, Matt Saliday, and Lisa Woodrich, I would nominate those three people.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Plan Commission.
And for the Plan Commission, Dr. Brian Damas, he's a reappointment, he's doing a great job, I'd like to reappoint him.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Peter Boa.
Just wanted to point out that Dr. Damas is also the Plan Commission CVA appointment. And for Peter Boa, we've got two appointments, there are some requirements that go with this one, political affiliation's not one of them, Nancy Calasa and Tammy Bianco.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Redevelopment Commission.
And then for the Redevelopment Commission, we have two reappointments, who've been doing a fantastic job, Jason Gilianna and Stephen Stilarsky.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
For the Stormwater Advisory Board, which does a lot of heavy lifting for our board when we get to deal with some of the stormwater issues, we've got Paul Nelson, a reappointment, and Todd Elliott.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And then for the West Porter Fire District, we've got one appointment, Jack Weber.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, and we have our folks seated so we can let these boards get back to work, thank you. Okay, getting into new business, first thing before we started, we wanted to sort of make it, this is more of a housekeeping announcement for here at Porter County Government, we've had some of our departments, because of the layouts and the way that the building is laid out in the admin center and over at the courthouse, we had had a skeleton crew staff in place during COVID because of proximity of the offices and everything that was set up in there. After, over the last several weeks, I think everybody has seen that the numbers are really starting to recede in the county, I think we're in an orange level right now, I think we're even close to yellow, we just feel that it's probably this time that we're going to lift those restrictions within the county government, so next Monday, we're requiring all those folks that had been on skeleton crews or whatever back to work, so.
I'd like to point out real quick, we only have 17 cases today, new cases, that's just astounding compared to what we've been dealing with for the past few months.
So for us, we want to sort of start bringing all of our employees back here, we're going to monitor it very closely, one of the reasons that we've decided this, I think when you all walked in here, I don't know if you've noticed, but the front door, there's a big thermal camera, so as people are entering into the building and other things, we're now, we're not having to stand out there, we're being able to take a much macro look at this by people coming in and out of our buildings, and I think with a lot of the things that Buildings Facilities has done in the buildings and the separations and all of the cleanser and the hands and the cleaning protocols, I just can't say enough.
We're not doing away with masks.
The masks stay, there's still going to be masks, we got to let these vaccines roll out over the next several months, but we're going to start slowly starting to come back here in Porter County, and we're going to be watching it very closely, but I also think that it's time to sort of get back to some business here and let's get our employees back and, you know, if we do have some extreme cases, that's why we have HR and that's why we have other things, and let that bubble up to us and we'll deal with it, we're not trying to make anybody uncomfortable, but in the same breath, we got a business to run here and we need to start slowly coming back to work and getting this going, so, trust me, this is something I've been wanting to say for a long time, but we're still not out of the woods yet, we still got to roll through some things and now, now, now we got to hold it together here the last three months, but.
And if we see any new spikes or problems, we'll react accordingly like we did this past time.
Yep, so any Commissioners, any, I did all the talking there, Jim, anything else?
Just hopefully by the time the weather breaks and gets warm, we'll be done with these pain in the butt masks, and I don't mind saying that, you know, we've done, we've done what we've needed to do internally, and it's been, you know, it's been a real trial for, not especially for the people who work here, but also the people who are in positions to manage all of this, and hopefully, I mean, the signs are pointing that direction, hopefully by the time that the weather breaks this spring, we'll be done, we'll be done with 99% of it, so.
The Health Department's doing a fantastic job getting the vaccines out, they've had so many compliments, so if you get the opportunity to schedule your vaccine, go for it and you should have a pretty good experience, in and out, pretty quick.
Only thing I would like to point out is that, to be clear, when we say skeleton crew and bring our people back, they've been working on, every department's a little bit different, but everybody's been working, it's just, they've been moving either from working from home remotely or working here and they've been kind of going back and forth in each individual department so that if we did have an outbreak, it didn't take the whole office down, but just for clarity's sake and the papers' sake, everyone's been working, it's just, what we're really saying is, all right, we're going to take those additional issues away and bring everyone back to the building and get back to more of a little bit more business, it's normal, all the other restrictions as far as masks, hallways, masks in offices and the things that we've previously put out are still there, it's just, we're taking that rotational skeleton crew issue off due to the, you know, to the significant reduction in the cases that we have right now.
It's just more efficient when everyone can work together in the same building.
Yeah, and a real quick couple shout outs to the Buildings Facilities Department, they've, I mean, once they had this thrown to them, they've been dealing with this for quite some time, I know Vicki's office, I know Kirk, has been doing a lot of the communicating and a lot of the writing, a lot of the stuff you see in the papers, social media, it really was a distraction of time for us to handle this, all the departments were affected, and I just want to thank all of them for sticking through there, we didn't have a lot of complaints, everybody just got up and, you know, I think originally we were always trying to make sure that this county didn't shut down so we could keep commerce and other things going in this community, because that's what pays the bills, and I think we, I don't know if you want to call it a victory lap, but I'm feeling very good about how we've come out on this, I mean, there's always areas that people can question and argue about or whatever, but I'm not a doctor, I'm, I do real estate things, I, you know, when my doctor tells me to do something, I do it, and that's how we've sort of approached this.
And we know we're not out of the woods, we're just in a good place.
Yep, and we're going to sort of push back a little bit, see if we can take some ground back, but still do it safely, and I think, as we call it, we're going to ride the lightning a little bit more here and, but we got to start getting the mindset of opening some things up here and coming back to work, so that's, I think at the end of the day, it's.
And just for the public to be aware of it, I mean, we've taken our lumps here, just like other businesses have and other home, households have, we've had dozens of cases that we've had to deal with, I'm one of them, and we never, we never missed a beat up here, and I think we're all pretty stunned that we haven't, but these masks and this, you know, checking your temperature coming in here and the rotating of personnel in and out of the building, wasn't done just as a precautionary, it was done out of necessity, and I think we're, hopefully we're through the worst of it, so.
Keep wearing the mask and even, you know, let's just slowly, let's just slowly start moving back to normal here, and that's what I think it's going to take, just a steady
I don't know if we'll ever be normal, Jeff.
Well, as normal as it can be, I guess, we'll put it that way, so anyway, I just wanted to comment on that, so we'll probably be seeing some more faces on Monday here coming back and that's all good, so back to work, they've been working, but.
Yeah, they've been working.
And I'd also like to thank the IT Department who set up a lot of, prior to the beginning of COVID, we were very wary about doing, having employees working at home on their computers, their own computers because of virus issues and, a different kind of virus, yeah, let's be clear, and I know Eric and the team down there in the last several months, when we went to that and rotating shifts, they, they found a solution, the solution has worked very well for us to be able to do that and also protect all of our data within the county, so, as easy as it sounds, we'll just let everybody work from home, you know, we have some handcuffs that come with that and that's people wanting to get into our, it's called cybersecurity, and we take that very seriously up here, because it's all your data too, it's your folks' data as well, so, we take that very seriously up here, so, and we actually even are insured for these type of things too, which, thanks to our insurance folks who are sitting in the audience too, that we have a better understanding of cybersecurity, insurance, all those other things too, so, but another, another department that sort of worked in the night and did all the things that threw everything up in the air force up here, and I know, you know, we don't get a lot of opportunities to thank them, but in this situation, and then our venue workers and people in the venues that decided to stay work and went and worked for the Health Department and other things, we've moved people around too, we've been moving people around and people have been doing things that they haven't done before, but we wanted to keep, these were important people to our venues and we wanted to maintain them and keep them, so when we are ready to go, we got the same staff and we can go right out and go get her again, so, I could go on and on, I'll quit bragging, but it makes us feel good that we did, we made some good decisions up here and that's all we're trying to say, so.
I want to, real quick, one more add on to that, we asked so many of our staff members and employees to do different things, to step out of their comfort zone, to step up, take on extra responsibilities, and we didn't get any complaints, I think the public should really feel good knowing that these are the people that they're spending their tax dollars on, people are just fantastic, I can't actually think of anyone who complained, they just said, okay, what do you need me to do, and sometimes I was expecting a complaint because we were asking a lot sometimes, but they just did, I want to point that out.
Yep, thank you, Laura. Well, we'll get into the business here, because I'm sure that's, everybody in the audience is probably waiting for some form of it or another here, but we'll stop patting ourselves on the back and go back to work here now. First of all, we have a resolution establishing an intent to conduct a Commissioner's sale, sell tax certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes, Scott, you want to give us an update, is this something you're working with, the auditor one, or?
Yeah, that's correct, this is the second step, we had the tax sale in December and this is the follow-up to the tax sale, where we've been pretty religiously doing these Commissioner's certificate sales once a year also, so this would be the resolution establishing that, along with the attached to the resolutions also an Excel spreadsheet showing all the actual parcels that would be subject to the certificate sale, if the Commissioners are looking to approve this resolution, we had previously set a matrix on the, how much the opening bid was, it was connected to how many times it had previously been at the property tax sale itself, so really it's either 50 or 75, and if memory serves me, if it had been on one tax sale, or, you know, just one, then it was 75 opening bid, if it had been on two or more, it was a $50 opening bid, so, I would just ask for that to be part of the motion, I've reviewed the resolution, that was, been working with the, excuse me, the Auditor's Office, and so I find it in good form and would recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman, a motion for a resolution establishing the intent for the Board of Commissioners, Port County Board of Commissioners to conduct a Commissioner's sale, sell tax certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes.
Scott, does that include everything you wanted included?
In the same.
I let it verbatim.
The same bid matrix?
Absolutely.
All right.
We have a motion and a second discussion, that 50 to 75, can we change that or is that mandated by the state?
No, we can change that.
This just seems awfully cheap.
Well, if you, these are the parcels that don't sell a tax sale, for a reason, normally.
You sell a list, you wouldn't think it was cheap.
We're just trying to clean them up.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Scott, and Madam Auditor. Next up, we have a contract between Danielle Harold and Porter County, I should have put my glasses on, that would help, this little mask that fogged up, Danielle Harold and Porter County Government, this is for grant writing services.
Yeah, can I quickly point out that this is a new contract, we've been working with Kate Sanders for a few years and she has decided to further her education and so was not renewing our contract with us due to time constraints, but Danielle came recommended by Kate, and I just wanted to point out real quick, in 2020, with Kate's help, we were awarded $498,366.59 worth of various grants, so it's a very worthwhile endeavor, she'd have a grant writer with us, so we're looking forward to Danielle joining us.
Is Danielle here?
I don't think she's here today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Most, we have a motion and a second, I believe these contracts are hourly, right? They're just hourly, so they're only getting billing for the time they're putting in to do the grant.
And it's not to exceed $200,000.
And it's not to exceed, yeah.
Nowhere near $500,000.
Yeah, yeah, right, I just want to let people know, that's how they, we do that, so, yeah, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, good luck Danielle, bring us the money. Next up, GIS Eric Gibson, and we're going to talk about our health insurance and our stop-loss renewal from UMR, United Healthcare and HCC, good morning Eric.
Morning.
How you doing?
Excellent, how about you?
Good.
Awesome, so first of all, thanks for the opportunity, over the last several months, I think we've done a lot of brilliant work behind the scenes, strategic planning and whatnot, so, as you guys know, this is the time of year where we all get together and talk about renewals, so, on the executive summary that you guys have in front of you, you've got the UMR and HCC illustrations there for all of those options, so, on your left there, on that left column, is going to be your current plan, initial renewal offer there, obviously there was some negotiation back and forth on the actual terms, but this is the format of the renewal, and then another alternate with HCC and UMR, the real question here today is the question of whether or not you buy more insurance or take on more claims liability, obviously, the past year has been a little strange from a claims perspective, so, without going into too much detail on that, the real question is, do we move the spec from 150 to 175 and change the aggregating spec, or just take that initial renewal offer? So, if you go from fixed costs only, so that's your UMR admin plus the stop loss, you guys are currently at 1.14, if you go to that initial renewal, it's about 108,000 more, so again, you're going to be purchasing more insurance with that one, taking on less claims liability over the course of the year, or you can go to the alternate one with the spec of 175 and the aggregating spec of 100K, and you're actually going to be spending about 30, $40,000 less in the stop-loss policy itself, again, taking on more claims liability.
Right, right.
So, currently your guys' plan is actually running about $100,000 over expected, that being said, if you net out the prescription drug rebates that we built into the last year, you guys are actually under expected by about $200,000.
Year over year.
Correct.
Pretty good for a COVID year.
Yeah, COVID and.
That was how much under?
About 200K.
Yeah.
$200,000.
And we're working, we're working too Eric, on our list that we sat down and went over this long, you know, we have our list of goals and objectives, and so we're.
Absolutely.
As we're, as we're moving this around, we're still trying to.
Yeah, there are a lot of things in the background that we see, I think you've mentioned some meat left on that bone in the conversation we had.
We found some good meat. Yeah.
We're just not sure if a COVID year is the time to make.
Exactly, so we're playing it a little safe this year because of COVID, and I think that's, I think that's probably wise.
Well, this is the first step, I mean, in the next meeting or two coming up, we're going to be dealing with the renewal of the actual UMR and the rest of this altogether, this is just the first, the first part of this, and we're also doing this because we kind, we have firm, a firm quote that's good till Friday until additional claims data comes out.
Correct, so we did go to market, given the HCC quote, a lot of folks were declining just because they didn't feel like they were going to be competitive, so.
That's good.
It's a good sign that this is a fair offer.
Good to hear.
And so, that's why we're doing this, a little out of sequence, not much, but just a hair, and it basically has to do with, none of us have exceedingly high hopes for the claim data that would be coming in Friday, not that we think it's necessarily going to be terrible, but enough to move the meter significantly down, probably.
This locks us in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so I think the discussion comes down to whether or not we take the, you know, really look at the initial renewal terms or the alternative one, both are with UMR, both are with HCC, and I think basically, to just to put a little bit into the record, I mean, part of this decision has to do with the fact that whenever you're self-insured and you have your stop-loss insurance as your backup, as, right now we're at $150,000 per person that's insured, if an individual hits certain benchmarks or with certain issues, the stop-loss insurance, you know, uses a fancy term called lasering that basically changes or modifies the stop-loss insurance for that particular person that's insured, that's included within these quotes, there's a known amount of individuals who are under the laser for the stop-loss, so, I guess, in a way that's good and a way that's bad, but in the way that it's good for this equation is that, you know, to some extent, the known individuals that would be potentially hitting the stop-loss are, have been identified by the matrix and the data themselves, so, when we're making the decision to potentially take on additional liability with the specific deductible going up $25,000, to some extent we're doing it with knowing that the significant known events are already being taken care of irrespective of this decision, so, to some extent, we are, we are taking on additional liability, however, we would need to be getting to, you know, maybe somewhere around five, six, seven people getting all the way to the stop-loss beyond the individuals already lasered before we would be even, and then we'd have to have more after that before we would actually start potentially seeing additional cost to the plan, so, given that matrix and given the difference here between going up about, we currently are at 800,978, the, to remain on the exact same terms, the renewal would be 933,658, alternative one, which would be with, still with the same insurance and the terms would remain the same except for the specific deductible would go from $150,000 on the stop-loss to $175,000 on the stop-loss, that quote brings us down to 786,564, so that $150,000 is basically, if you, if we paid the extra to remain exactly the same, as opposed to the 13, $14,000 we would save by changing that deductible, is basically that $150,000 that would take roughly six people additional that aren't already lasered to get back there, so, I think that kind of frames the argument for everyone.
Well, knowing all of that, I don't see how we don't choose alternate one, so I'll make a motion for discussion as people aren't ready yet for alternate one renewal for the stop-loss premium.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other additional discussion?
Just, you know, my, my concern is taking on additional claims liability during the pandemic, but I can also understand or appreciate the other, the other choices here, but, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a tough question, just because, I mean, no one's got a crystal ball, right?
Right.
With a crystal ball, we know exactly what's going on.
Yeah, I think, I think from where I'm coming from is, I feel again, we did such a good job at managing our employees this year, that I don't feel as risky, I mean, I think we all probably have our own reasons why, you know, but I learned in insurance a long time ago, if you can, if you can take a little back, you take it back, and it's a probability game in a lot of ways anyway, but I think we're trending right, I think knowing that we're playing a little safe this year already, and next year that we have some more meat on the bone, I, I don't feel so bad about alternate one, but I definitely hear what you're saying, Jim, but.
And this is not going to affect our employees.
No, it's six of one, half of the other, right.
This is not going to affect, the employees won't notice this change.
No, these aren't plan design changes, this is all behind the scenes, this is stop-loss insurance.
This will not cost them.
Right.
I mean, if the other, if you and Jeff are fine with it, I'm fine, so I support my second.
Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second on alternate one of our stop-loss plan for Porter County Health Insurance, all those in favor to this motion, please signify by stating aye, aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you Eric, we're continually, our trend down, so we'll keep plugging away, thank you. All right, next up, we have Juvenile Detention Center, and it looks like we have someone rather than. rather than Allison, huh?
You don't look like Allison.
Yeah, how you doing?
My name is Connor Stain. I'm the detention manager.
Yep.
And Allison has asked me to be here this morning. Uh, to seek renewal for our contract with Newton County for 2021.
Okay.
Are there any changes?
Uh, no, there are no changes. Per diem stays the same. It's for 100 bed days.
Okay. I mean, what is the per diem rate?
Uh, $140 per day.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for an agreement between the Porter County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Newton County, Indiana, for housing of, uh, children in the Juvenile Detention Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Quick question. How, it, over the last three years, the number of beds that we've, we've been leasing, has that gone up, gone down, stayed the same?
Yeah, I would say Jim, it's pretty much stayed the same, stayed consistent.
Okay.
Uh, it's been a good deal for us, good deal for other counties. And so it's typically no changes.
Yeah, other counties paid for that building.
Yes, sir.
Not a bad deal.
Not a bad deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. You bet. Uh, Purdue Extension, uh, this is Annette Jones. Um, I believe this is in a, a contract services, this is a contract between Purdue University and Porter County Government. That's an annual agreement. Put that up on the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we got Development and Stormwater Management. Uh, Bob Thompson. Department's had a pretty busy last couple of weeks, um, to say the least.
He looks rested.
Good morning gentlemen, again.
Morning.
Morning.
So first thing we got here is this is to receive an open sealed bids for Bridge 73. And this is 50 West over Cobb Ditch.
Correct.
And we're opening them now. What's, where is this, uh, geography wise? Where is this, Bob?
Uh, 50 West, it's between 600 South and State Road 8. Um, it's one of our few gravel roads that we have left. It was the bridge that was washed out during the, um, storm event. So we do have FEMA money on this to reimburse us once we have that.
Completed project.
Correct, completed project.
So this is replacing a bridge that was taken out by the flooding.
Correct.
Several years ago.
That's right. Yes, we've had this road closed and the bridge closed for, well, a couple of years now almost.
It's been rough on some of the players.
Yeah, which I need to apologize to Vicki in the auditor's office. We forgot to let them know that these were coming in. Sorry.
Judy did a great job as always though Vicki. Thank you. Okay, the first, the first, uh, the first, uh, bid is from Dunnett Bay Construction Company. And they're from 115 North Brandon Drive, Glendale Heights, Illinois. And their price that they came in with is 1 million, 7,000, 71 million, $7,158.74. 1 million, $7,158.74. What's the span of that bridge? Not bad.
Um, it was a single span.
Yep.
On this, but we are now, uh, going to a three span on this. And the main reason a lot of our bridges are having to go to that for the purposes of clearing the 100-year flood of that. So...
So it'll, it'll be much different than what's out there currently.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that, with the bridge program that we've implemented several years ago is as we're redoing these bridges, we're going in and we're assessing them. We're just not looking at them as how they service today. We're looking at them as how they're going to service these roads in the future. So we've been buying additional right-of-way. We've been trying to get rid of guardrails and try to do more grading. I mean, there's been a lot of things, uh, elevations raised up because of whatever. So, uh, as we've been, we're, we're not just rebuilding bridges. We're taking ground and we're, I know in Porter, we worked with the town of Porter to get them a sewer easement through and, and a trail up there. So, um, you know, again, up here, we're trying to do things that are purposeful as we go forward. So we don't leave the next group up here with something that at some point in time is just not doable. So we're, we're trying to take some of these ground back and make these bridges better as we rebuild them and rehab them. So just a little pitch for the bridge crew and the bridge department there. Um, the next one that we opened up here is, uh, Garrett Construction out of Gary, Indiana. And their bid is 837,500. And next up is... JCI Bridge Group, and they're out of La Porte, Indiana. And they're 810,890.44. Next up is Reith Riley Construction out of Gary, Indiana. And they're 840,826.96. And this is Larson Danielson Company out of La Porte, Indiana. And they were 838,077.64. Last one. Last one is La Porte Construction out of La Porte, Indiana. And they're 777,425.62. I'm sorry, can you read, read the Reith Riley one again? Or I can read it Jim, if you can't find it.
No, La Porte Construction.
La Porte Construction, I'm sorry. It is 777,425.62. Got it? Thank you. That was good to see. We got a lot of good participation there and, uh, we'll, we'll take those under advisement and...
Under advisement. We'll be back at the next meeting given...
We'll be back at the next meeting to, to let. Okay, so we'll, we'll study them. Next meeting, we'll let. Okay. Next, next up on the agenda, we have an amendment to the Dunes Kekke Key Trail Fund Ordinance Number 11 dash 11 dash 11 dash 11. This is first reading. Take it away Bob.
Dunes Kekke Key Trail Fund was created in 2011. It was for the purposes of receiving funding, federal funding for the project that we had back then. It was the State Road 49 and US 20 interchange project where we bridged over with the trail for the Dunes Kekke Key. Basically goes from the visitor center and gets us into, through the intersection and then connects into the national parks there. Uh, this trail fund has been sitting there and it's, it has about $90,000. And that was from the reimbursement of, of our Dunes Kekke Key Trail project. So I was hoping, and it's been sitting there for almost 10 years. So I was hoping to repurpose this so that way we can keep working on the Dunes Kekke Key Trail. But also, um, more importantly, the Calumet Trail, which this connects into, that we can keep the funding going for these two trails. And they're, use this $90,000 also for both of these trails. They're both very important trails.
So ultimately, the, if the commissioners were to pass this, the funds that were deposited here would be only used for any purpose reasonably related to trail construction, reconstruction, and maintenance. So it would still only be for trails. And those are our two main trail hubs. So...
Correct.
That's what we would be utilizing it for.
And who controls this pot of money? Is this up at NERC? Is this with us?
No, this is with us.
Okay.
So I mean, if we go forward and use this, I'm going to have to go in front of the county council to reappropriate this money into the line item that we see.
And you're thinking that this could probably go towards the, the trail, the Calumet Trail that we're working on? Possibly.
Possibly. That's one of the intents we're looking at too.
So how much money is that fund holding?
Currently, right now, it's, I mean, it's just, it's roughly $90,000. We spent a few hundred dollars last year to, to maintain some bollards and fix some bollards that that are up there on the trail at the interchange.
And just, I'm just curious, um, where does those funds derive from that, that, that one holds?
That came from a reimbursement grant. We did have that, the, the project I mentioned getting through that interchange, um, was, uh, through NERC. It was a congressional appropriation. It was through Congressman Visklosky's office and everything like that. And it was reimbursement. So we spent all the money up there to get it all done, the engineering and the, uh, construction. And then they reimbursed us.
So we can, we can apply for additional grants or whatever for this fund as well to keep...
Sure. I mean, that's, would be the whole intent with, because we have $200,000 coming up, federal funding for the, uh, Calumet Trail coming up and everything. And that's going to be reimbursement as well. So it would be great to be able to direct that funding, the reimbursement back into this to keep it moving.
Motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, it's a, it's a reading. It's a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, just one other thing, just, you know, I, this is sort of the beginning, this is sort of the beginning of the, the march. Uh, over the next several months, we'll probably be having a presentation, uh, in this board meeting about the Calumet Trail, what we've been working on and what's been happening. We've been collaborating with the National Park Service. Um, and we think we have some pretty cool, exciting things coming out of this. And there are some federal funds that are all sitting there waiting for this trail to be done, or parts of it. Uh, so we're working on all that as well too. So, uh, stay, stay tuned because over the next several months, we're going to try to have something in a, in a, in a format that we can give a presentation to show people sort of what we're up to and where we're trying to head here. And, um, and, uh, I think at that point, when we roll that out, we'll try to have the, the national park folks here if they want to come to. And I guess just show the community that we're working together to try to make something happen. They're now a national park, designated a national park. They, they're now coming into more funds and some other things. So I think this is kind of with, and then with NICD, uh, taking care of the bridge at 49 and widening that, that, that cost now goes to the NICD project. So I think the, the clouds are starting to open up here and, you know, projects like this always get down to timing. And I think because of the, the, what's going on at NICD and what's going, the, the, all the work up on the rail up there and some of the other things, this is just a, a perfect time to, to roll this project out. So stay tuned. This is sort of the housekeeping end on some of this stuff. But I know we're, we're excited to, uh, bring this out, start showing people where we're, what we're thinking and where we're going. And this will really enhance the north part, the North Lake Shore communities and the north part of the county. Uh, but then everybody can use them as well too. So, um... There's been, I think there's this sense by some residents, or quite a few residents, that, that we've kind of forgotten about the Cal Trail. And nothing further from the truth, uh, could be...
Keep our fingers crossed. There could be construction going in a year.
Yeah. Well, we're, there's been a lot of... Well, NICD, a double track is going to be starting this summer to fall this year. To say it's a, you know, I think it's an understatement. Say it's going to be better and, and much more improved by the time that we're finished. But I think this is, this, the, if you remember, the original trail was on a easement that NIPSCO had, that now had a very high, high tension electric wires that are on a national grid. Then you also have now a high-pressure gas line below the trail. Um, it's getting to the point where we didn't think that this, this was not as much of a trail, it was more of a big, high-end utility easement. Do we really want to have the community out there in and around this stuff? I, I, so, uh, about that time, we were questioning all these decisions. That's when the national park got their designation. So they got a little pep in their step. And so now all of a sudden, we're all talking and collaborating and the ideas are coming out. And so it's going to take a little longer to get there, but it's not going to be on an easement. And we're going to be hopefully wayfinding through the park and doing some other things too. So, um, timing is everything, right? And this gives us an opportunity. And I think with NICD picking up a lot of the infrastructure costs on some things, I think this is, it, it sets the deck for us to do something. And I think if we can use some existing trails and roads and other things up there, that's going to reduce the cost. We can get it done quicker. And, uh, plus the, more of the park gets enjoyed rather than just a segment of it. Correct. So, um... I mean, it's going to be a much, a much more interesting walk or ride than it, than it was, much more.
Correct.
And I know Commissioner Bates and I have sat on the NICD board. Uh, the numbers and the, the pipes on trains over the last six years has been huge coming out of Chicago. I mean, double-digit growth in those numbers every year. So the city of Chicago is looking for places to come out here. This trail would connect with Michigan City. This would then take you all the way down into Michigan City. So there is a lot of, this is about 10, 11 miles of stuff that you can do there.
Go to New Buffalo.
Yep, yeah. So we're, we're excited. Um, but with that, let's do the boring housekeeping stuff here. Let's, we're going to close up the, uh, we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting and open up a public hearing. Um, and, uh, what we're going to do is give three opportunities to come forward to speak against, and three to, uh, speak against, and three to speak for. So the first call is anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? And with that, public hearing is closed. I'll throw it to the floor for a vote on first reading.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll put this on the agenda for second reading at the next meeting. Next up, United Consulting. This is an annual on-call emergency services supplemental agreement. And I think United is the one that, uh, is the administrator of our bridge program.
Motion to approve.
Correct, yeah.
They do our bridge inspections.
Inspections, right, yep. Motion and a second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Wetlands Banking Group of Indiana. Uh, this is an agreement to purchase credits for the 100 South project. Um, Bob? I, I think I know what this is, but go ahead.
We're required to mitigate some wetland impacts we have with 100 South project on that. And instead of going out and actually us creating a wetland, we are going and purchasing credits. Uh, this particular one is the Plains, I can't think of the name of it. It's down in Newton County, just south of the, the Kekke Key River. Um, the prairie down there that they have, that they just reestablished. So we're actually going to go down there and purchase credits from them for 19,000. This is just one place that we're going to have to buy, uh, credits for 100 South. We do have another one that we're going to have to come forward with later.
Drop down in some of those low areas is the road?
Correct. I think it's more towards 750.
Yep.
In that area is where those impacts are at.
Yep. It's very common. It's done a lot out there. So... Need a motion?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second for the Wetlands Banking Group of Indiana. It's an agreement to purchase credits, uh, for wetland credits for the 100 South project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have Endot here. Uh, these are, this is an agreement for 2020, 2021 CCMG program. Uh, we will also be seeking sealed bids for the paving work within the aggregate, uh, um, for the paving work within the, the agreement as one bid package for the following. So we have Meridian Road, 900 North to 1050 North, 550 South from Sloan Street to 250 West, Smoke Road from State Road 2 to Division Road, Baum's Bridge Road, State Road 8 to 900 South, 700 North, 400 West to 500 West, Tower Road, 250 West, 130 to 500 North. So we'll, uh, throw that to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second, an agreement for 2020, 2000, is that 2021 and 2022?
No, this is just the, the fall, um, award for CCMG.
Yep, yep, sorry.
They call it 2020 dash two.
Yep, okay.
Don't want to confuse us.
Yeah, right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries.
I have one favor to ask of the commissioners on this one. Um, as always with Endot, we're on the clock now, but I have to get this agreement back to them fairly quick. So is, the sooner you can sign this, the better.
We're all...
Give me my blue pen.
Yeah.
It's those, uh, remote meetings that give us trouble.
Endot makes us sign everything in a blue pen. I don't know why, but we do. Did you get that to us?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Don't leave.
Next up, Lock Mueller Group. This is an annual on-call service agreement to provide professional engineering survey and planning and environmental services. Want to add anything to that?
No, it's just to help off highway engineering with roads and bridges.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Lock Mueller Group. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, American Structure Point. This is a, a local funded engineering agreement for Porter County Bridge Replacement One Zero Zero Seven. That's Bridge One Thousand Seven. And this is Central Avenue over Willow Creek. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Central Avenue over Willow Creek.
Yes, this is.
Down by the cemetery.
Correct.
On the weird curve going towards Lake State.
It's west of Willow Creek Road.
Weird curve, yeah.
Yeah.
I would also, Chris, could you come up and just sort of give, give the commissioners a brief detail as to your discussion with the city of Portage? I just, the commissioners need to know that there's dialogue going on there. It's positive. It's all positive.
This bridge, Central Avenue over Willow Creek, is located right in the middle of a road improvement project that's funded through NERC that the city of Portage is sponsoring through that area. Generally, Phase One will be from Swanson Road over to Peak Street. And the bridge sits right in the middle there. The agreement for engineering services with the city of Portage was approved with the redevelopment commission last week to start that off. And this agreement here today will provide for a replacement bridge. The current bridge, Central Avenue over Willow Creek, is, is very close with regard to its condition rating of requiring some improvement work necessary. So this is an opportunity for the county to fit within a road reconstruction project to improve the bridge as part of the road reconstruction project. The intent is, is to include the, the bridge replacement construction plans with the road reconstruction plan so that the bridge can take advantage of entrance traffic and, and other costs that are being funded through the road reconstruction project. So the county's responsibility on the bridge replacement is essentially from end of approach slab to end of approach slab, those costs. Now, because the bridge will be constructed just to the north of the existing bridge, so we can utilize the existing bridge when we build a new one. There will be some right-of-way acquisition, and we've worked that out with the city of Portage, a sharing agreement of the bridge footprint right-of-way and the road reconstruction.
So you say it'll be constructed just north of the existing bridge? So there'll be like a little jog when we're done?
Well, there's a realignment of Central Avenue on either side of Willow Creek that kind of helps realign the Swanson Road intersection and also the Willowdale Road intersection. Both those are kind of in the middle of the curve right now. So there is road realignment there, but it takes the bridge to the, just to the north of the existing bridge, if you recall, just to the south of the existing bridge is the cemetery.
Right.
So we really couldn't go in any other direction other than.
Any idea how old that existing bridge is?
I do not know.
I could find out. I just don't have it on my fingertips. I want to.
Fifty, sixty years old.
I think at least.
Yeah, easily.
The new bridge will, the, the current bridge has a sidewalk on there. The new bridge will have a sidewalk on there also. And, and the new road reconstruction will bring a sidewalk from, from the, the intersection of the road up to connect to the bridge. So that there will be multi-use capacity on the new bridge as well as the road reconstruction.
Good. Sounds like a nice project.
Do we have a estimate of construction on this yet, or?
Not yet.
Okay.
If I had a lot of ballpark, I'm probably going to tell you one point two to one point four.
What was the current rating on this bridge?
His efficiency rating was right at sixty, and two of the categories that we look at are at a five. And just so you know, if it goes below sixty and one of those categories, such as deck or substructure, goes to a four, we have to inspect it annually.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we're there.
We're there.
Gotcha. That's all I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for American Structure Point for Bridge Replacement One Zero Zero Seven. That's for engineering agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks for the background.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, we're at the end of our meeting here. Anybody wishing to address this board? And with that, this board stands in recess.